Thank you, everyone, for joining us this evening. This is the continuation of our 2020-2021 operating budget proposal discussion. And I still shake my head that we're talking about 2020, and it is 2020. This is a series of workshops that is facilitated by the Board of Finance Committee. We made this a special meeting on the whole, so that way all board members can be here legally and not have it be an illegal meeting, because we all have very detailed questions. And having us all at one place to get it done with the one presentation, and it just makes things a lot more streamlined. That's why you see all of us here. I'll talk a little bit about how we operate during these sessions. But tonight begins public budget review. We call this accounts review. This is basically where we take the -- well, it's not as thick as last year, unless I'm seeing things. Usually it's a three-inch set of account detail that the administration puts together that starts with our principals and building administrators and leads of the wish list or needs that they like, and it rolls up to Superintendent Solan's office and Mr. Masiana, and they go through it and come up with a superintendent's presentation or proposal, which Superintendent Solan gave last Thursday. We'll spend the next two, three weeks going through a proposal. We have three new board members. I'm sure there'll be some fresh insights and some questions, but it's a great opportunity to have an interactive discussion. Vincent and team will give a presentation. The Finance Committee tends to ask questions on the presentation. The board gets to ask questions, and also the public gets to ask questions. So we try to make this as interactive as possible while focusing on the budget. So, that being said, Mr. Grippo, I'm going to turn it over to you, to the Finance Committee. Adam is the Finance Committee Chairman. The Finance Committee is Adam Grippo, Faith Hamm, and Catherine Helen. Mr. Chairman, it's all yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I believe Mr. Masiana has a presentation for us.
I do. Welcome. I am Vin Masiana. I'm the Chief Operating Officer for the Cheshire Public Schools. I know Tony mentioned that he can't believe it's 2020. Neither can I, and I started here 10 years ago, almost to the day. So this is my 11th budget presentation. I didn't think I'd make it past five, but I'm still here. So, you know, tonight's presentation is, you know, has been put together, and I'll go through the process, has been put together to provide, you know, the high-level information that's detailed in the budget book that the board members have. And, you know, not only are the budget book details online, but this presentation will be online as well at the end of this evening. So with that, I did want to start out with another recognition. Mr. Solan, Superintendent, did this at his presentation on January 9th. But, you know, the artwork for this year's budget book and this presentation was drawn by Aubrey Ignatowski, who was in Highland at grade one when she drew this. She's now a second grader, so it's a beautiful picture, and it reminds me of spring, which is about when we'll be done with this budget process. So it's kind of a little bit of a forward-looking picture for us. The agenda for this evening, we're going to cover three primary sections of our budget. We'll go through an overview of the budget, including the process. We will talk about revenue, and then we'll start getting into the employee salaries, and we break up certified salaries and non-certified salaries this evening, and we also cover employee benefits tonight. And then in Session Two, which is next Tuesday, we'll go through the rest of the budget, which is instructional expense. There'll be a presentation by Tracy Nolan-Hussy, our Director of Pupil Personnel on Special Education. Then we'll also talk about support services, maintenance, and operations. And the plan is to conclude on Tuesday night next. However, there is an additional session on January 23rd, so that's the following Thursday. In case we don't complete these sections or we have to come back and answer questions, that'll be another date that is already scheduled for the budget. As we go through the presentation tonight, we'll certainly do our best to answer any questions that come up, and if there are questions that we can't answer just because we don't have the information readily available, we'll address it at the next meeting like we've done in the past. So that's the plan, and without further ado, I'll jump in. Talk a little bit about our budget process. We began working on this budget in September, so we're several months in already. There is a lot of preliminary work that needs to get done, you know, to set up our accounts for the new budget. Some key things to understand about the budget. When we budget salaries, and again, we'll go through the salary section this evening, we budget salaries based on actual numbers from payroll. We don't take last year's salaries and increase them 3%. It's done person by person, bargaining unit by bargaining unit. So raises or any other monies that are owed are done person by person, and then they roll up into each of the sections of the budget, you know? And that's important, because as you start to look through some of the numbers, you'll see that, well, this particular bargaining unit should be receiving a 2.25% increase. Well, why isn't it 2.25%? Why is it less, or why is it more? So I'll try and explain some of those details. But that is an important point, that we don't just take any of our budget numbers and just increase it and hope for the best the following year. There is a lot of detail that goes into each line item and payroll in particular. The medical benefits portion of the budget is based on projected renewal estimates, and I'll show you that as we get to the medical benefits portion. And then, really, the third leg that I wanted to talk about is, as we're developing the budget, the managers, there are department managers such as our maintenance department, our technology department, all the school principals, they are each considered budget managers in our system. They put in their own budget requests for their non-salary line items. So textbooks, as an example, is a line item that the principals would make a budget request for, and they do that, you know, directly, and then we roll it up. Any new program or any additional staffing, we ask the managers not to input that into their budget request. They submit that separately, and I'll show you some of the requests that we received, okay? So there's several different layers of preparing the budget. Once everything is in, and it's always due by Thanksgiving, the budget package details, they're reviewed, they're discussed, and they're adjusted to meet the district goals. And that review is done with the principals, the department managers, our Superintendent Solan, Assistant Superintendent Marlene Solano, and also Tracy Nolan-Hussy as Director of Pupil Personnel. So there is a budget process that we go through to present what ultimately was decided on tonight. And the Superintendent presented his recommended budget on January 9th, as Mr. Perugini mentioned, and tonight we're beginning the detailed review. The next step, and the deadline that the Board of Ed has is, budget has to be approved and submitted to the town manager by February 15th. That's an annual date. The Town Council by charter has to approve the town's budget by April 30th. Any line item changes that are applied, if the Town Council reduces the budget, they reduce one number, the budget number. That reduction then comes back to the Board of Education for actual line item adjustments. So that's how that piece works. So typically, our budget isn't finalized until May. So, you know, tonight is the beginning of the detailed work for the Board of Ed. We started this in September, will end in May. That's why it always feels around here like we're budgeting, because we kind of are. The Superintendent, you know, presented at his budget, I don't want to spend a lot of time on this slide, but everything that you see in this budget is filtered through the goals that the district has, and the two that everyone is certainly aware of, is complex thinking and social emotional learning. So the budget is grounded in the accomplishment of those goals. So now we're going to talk a little bit about the key assumptions. You know, these are the high-level items that are built into the budget. First of all, student enrollment is projected to decline by 47 students. 11 in pre-K through six, excuse me, pre-K through six increases by 11. Grade seven and eight decreases by 10, and at the high school, there's a decrease of 48, okay? So that's, you know, one of the key assumptions. And the important thing about that is, because of the elementary, middle school grade changes in particular, there's actually no staffing adjustment required, not at the elementary and not at the middle school level, okay? At the elementary level, the class size increases slightly from 7.9 currently to about 18.1 students per class. Again, that's based on the enrollment. As we get to the beginning of the school year, those numbers might change slightly, but based on projections, there's no staffing for general ed teachers in this budget. Special education, even though student enrollment has been declining and it will decline next year according to the projection, student enrollment in special education is increasing, and the needs of students continues to grow. And you'll hear a lot more detail about that at the Tuesday night presentation that Ms. Hussey will do. But in this budget, we have two half-time special education teachers included in the numbers, one for Darcy Kindergarten and one for the Quinnipiac and Transition Program. There's also a half-time board-certified behavioral analysis that's included in our budget. And then the line items for tuition outplacement, pupil services, and the non-certified salaries for instructional assistance are also increasing because of the needs there in special education. On the non-certified side, there is a .8 interventionist for math for Dodd Middle School, as well as two hall monitors added for Norton and Chapman. Again, all included in the budget that's before you. The increase requested in medical benefits, I'm sure we'll spend some time on that tonight and probably during deliberations, but it's important to note here that we've actually decreased the medical benefits budget over the last three years. Part of that is because our costs, you know, have been relatively contained, but also because we have a very healthy reserve fund. But the recommendation this year is to start funding so that our claims are being funded in, the contributions are funding the actual claims expected, so that we stop using the reserve fund. But again, that'll get lots more detail. And then we have a slight increase in operations and maintenance, which was a line item that, you know, we typically cut the last several budgets as we've gotten reductions back from the Town Council, and that's driven by, you know, the maintenance needs for our aging buildings. So now to move into some more of the details, you know, one of the, so one of the realities that we as a school district and every school district has is we have mandates that, you know, for the most part, come from the state, some are federal. So this is just an exhaustive list. Again, this presentation is available online, and the board members have it. But what I wanted to focus on here is the newer mandates, which, as we go through the next school year, may require some adjustments to next year's budget. You know, in particular, the portfolio-based assessment, which is a new graduation requirement, may need some, you know, staffing adjustments. I think that's being analyzed, you know, by our educational leaders. But you could see that there's new course requirements for grades nine through 12, computer science, including computer programming instruction, as well as Black and Latino studies, exclusionary timeout training that will affect our special education staff primarily, and the written parent notification of a child standing as to the gifted and talented classification. It's by understanding we've already been doing that, but now it's just a requirement of the law. No questions, I'm going to keep moving. Is that okay? All right. So now we're going to get into some of the numbers of the budget, and we're going to start with revenue. The total dollar amount you see here, $10,351,000. We budget that revenue, and we pass it over to the town manager when we submit our budget. So these are the estimates of the funds that will be received. The important thing that I want to explain is that these revenues are budgeted, they are not direct offsets to our operating budget. In other words, these are budgeted, the town is aware that these funds will be transmitted to them, we will not receive these funds. It's just accounted for as part of our budget process, because these are all educational revenues that are paid by the state. The big one you see here is educational cost sharing. It's $9.3 million. We'll talk a little bit more about this in one of the upcoming slides, but Cheshire gets a relatively high amount of educational cost sharing compared to similar communities in our District Reference Group B. A lot of that has to do with the fact that we have a prison in town, and the prisoners who are counted in our population have no income. So it makes Cheshire look less affluent, and it helps buoy the amount of educational cost-sharing funds that we receive. You know, every year, there is a legislation proposed that's been defeated repeatedly to change the way the prisoner population is counted. The past legislation that's been proposed would say, rather than count those prisoners with the town's population where the jail is, to count those prisoners back to where their last domicile was, which not many of the prisoners in Cheshire are from Cheshire, I don't think, so that would hurt us. And that legislation, you know, is always fought, and it's not passed. But I do want to, I like to mention that because it does present a risk if that were to change.
Have you ever looked at it to see what it would change, exactly?
How much the funding would change if the law was changed?
I guess it depends on what the change to the law is. So, no, I've not looked at it specifically, what the number would look like. But even if it's $1 million, that would be a large...
I get it. I do. I'm just curious what the number would be.
Yeah. I mean, what we have seen is some of the, you know, prior biennial budget proposals that came, you know, from Governor Malloy in particular, would have, you know, in one case, you know, cut this to Cheshire to a couple of million dollars down from, you know, from $9 million. So fortunately, that never happened, and we have legislators, you know, that represent us in Hartford that have helped us fight against that. But it's a risk, and the dollar amount of that risk, you know, is kind of unknown.
So just for clarity on this, there's, I recall the situation with the proposal from Malloy, and what I recall is, I'll characterize it as two different issues, one of which is residency of the inmates.
Right.
And then the other was just other changes unrelated to residency, right?
You're exactly right.
Okay, okay.
Okay. Special education cost, that revenue is received by us when we have a special education student that we can't provide services to, we place them out of district. Whenever the total cost of that placement exceeds four and a half times our average per pupil expenditure, so round numbers about $75,000, the state reimburses us for that excess cost. The $479,000 budget assumes the state is going to reimburse us at the 70% reimbursement rate that they've been giving us. It's underfunded, the state's supposed to fund 100% when you get over the four and a half times per pupil expense, but the state has not funded that. I'm not saying ever, but certainly since I've been here, they do not fund excess costs at the 100% rate. They fund it at 70%. It's a block grant. They take all the requests from the school districts and to divide up that money based on the request, and our percentage usually comes in at about 70%. Birth to Three, that is a program that's offered at Darcy. I know the board members are aware of this. That $360,000 essentially does pay for the full cost of the Birth to Three program. It's one of the few things that the state is fully funding and continue to do so. The rest of these, school construction grant, that's an old grant methodology, and every year that number goes down a little bit lower and lower. We only receive transportation grant funding for transportation of students to magnet schools. That grant was eliminated for regular ed transportation several years ago. Our preschool Smart Start program, that's revenue that, again, is received, it's budgeted, it's received by the town. Adult ed, same thing. Building use rental fees, this one I do want to explain because it's come up as a request from the board members and it's been in the press lately, but building use rental fee is revenue that's received, I'm going to go forward and then I'll come back. This is revenue that we receive whenever someone is using our building, that's being charged a building use fee. And I want to separate that from a custodial reimbursement. So you could see in this, this is last year's revenue. We collected $13,261. Goes into the town's general fund. We don't receive it as an offset to cost. It's budgeted, and it goes to the town. So you could see that the largest revenue that's generated is from the Cheshire Y. They have their before and aftercare program running in five of our schools. It's all the elementaries plus Darcy. $9,000 of the $13,000 is received from the Cheshire Y. Small World Languages was $1,890. Temple Beth David uses our Homestead building for Sunday school, and you could see the rest of the users are charged. There is a schedule that is available, you know, building use, you know, is an online process these days. So those are the revenues that we collected. Again, not custodial. We'll talk about how custodial reimbursements from we got to non-certified salaries. So when that money comes in, it's paid, you know, to us, and it's turned over to the town. And I want to flip back for a second. So why is this revenue important? It's important because of what's highlighted here in yellow. The bottom line is that $10.3 million in revenue, if we didn't receive it, the cost to the average taxpayer here in Cheshire would be $828. In other words, their taxes would be $828 higher. The average Cheshire resident that's listed here, $228,840 in assessed value, that's for a home and two cars. To the extent that you have higher or lower assessed value, your cost, you know, would be higher or lower than that $828. So this revenue is certainly important, you know, to the schools, and it's also important to the taxpayers because it does ease the load. Yes, sir?
You mentioned before... Sorry. Mike, do you need me to, it's better, okay. You had mentioned before that the Birth to Three program is basically fully funded, the state funds that come in. I'm just wondering about the other ones. I'm looking, the one that goes through my mind is the transportation, but do you have those numbers for any of the other line items up there? Are they self-sustaining? Are they a surplus, a deficit? I'm just curious.
Well, we know special ed, excess cost is not fully funded by the state.
Yeah, no doubt.
The magnet school transportation, it's a formula, and I could do a comparison, I don't have it tonight, but I could do a comparison to show what does it actually cost versus what is the reimbursement that we get. Tuitions, the Smart Start tuition that we receive, I know it doesn't fully offset the cost, because the formula that was used, I believe, was $50,000 for two teachers and then $20,000 each for two IAs. So I believe our teacher salaries are above that $50,000, so it's not fully reimbursing. So it's certainly funding the major portion of that. And adult ed, I do have to check on that one as well. I don't see Kelly Lens here, but she would answer. The adult ed is just for the men mandated programs that we provide, not for any of the enrichment programs that we provide.
Wait, what do you mean by that?
Mandated programs are... So adult education, we have to have a mandated program for high school equivalency, diploma as an example.
Yeah, GED, okay.
An enrichment program would be, you know, cooking or some kind of computer programming class. So this only applies to the mandated programs we have to offer.
Okay. With regard to the enrichment ones, is there a number associated with that, or is that like in a different bucket?
Which one?
The enrichment that you're talking about? Because I just see that adult ed, and I think it's that whole booklet that I get.
Well, the enrichment program, I believe, is pretty much sustaining.
Okay.
So the classes that people sign up for, Superintendent Solan's nodding his head. So if there's a class, everyone that goes to the class pays $20 or $30, whatever the fee is, associated with that class.
So does that run through the Department of Ed budget? I mean, we'll just call it a 74, 75 million, 76, I'll call it $75 million budget. Does the adult ed enrichment go through that budget?
It does.
It does?
Yes.
Okay.
But we don't, again, the enrichment courses, if we don't have enough enrollment to cover costs, we don't run the class.
No, no, no. Yeah, no, that's what I'm wondering about, what I'm getting at, is I just assumed that this was all the revenue except for the number that gets sent over from the Town Council. But that doesn't sound like it's the case exactly.
No. The other thing with the mandated programs is Vin was saying, we do have courses we have to offer, for example, like GED required. So we run those courses, and there's a cost associated with that. Does adult ed, the grant, fully offset that? I don't believe it does, but I will have to, that we will double-check with Kelly to confirm.
Okay, yeah, just to, just to be clear.
Kelly is here. It does not, as we surmised.
Oh, Kelly is here. I'm sorry, I didn't see you.
About a quarter of the cost, so roughly $100,000 for compulsory courses, and we're granted $26,000.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just trying to understand.
Pretty good, actually, compared to the usual state funding.
We're on the topic, so I just figured I'll ask this. Can you explain, what is the 20, the $26,000 is revenue related to mandates, like the GED?
It's grant revenue from the state of Connecticut to offset the cost incurred by the Cheshire Public Schools to offer compulsory programs.
Okay, so what does the $100,000 represent?
That's the cost, the total cost that it costs us to run the compulsory programs. So roughly, then, if it's $100,000, we're getting like 26% reimbursement on it.
So that's for the, that's for the man, the $100,000 is for the mandated classes?
For the mandated program, yes.
And then...
The enrichment programs, totally separate, that's a wash. We don't, we're not, you know, we're not losing money on that deal.
No, yeah, no, and that wasn't a question. I was, I guess what I'm getting at is, I'm just wondering, where does that money fall? Because I see that, and I think you get $65 million from the council, plus this $10 million, that's a $75 million budget. But what you're saying is, no, there's more money someplace else, I guess that's...
No, there's not more money someplace else.
Is the adult enrichment up there? Adult enrichment revenue?
Yeah, because we're not really making revenue on that. We're paying for the cost of the individual to run the class.
Oh. Okay, okay, yeah, it's not...
Well, you know, I'll talk to Kelly about it and make sure we have more detailed information next, next go around.
Sure, sure, sure.
Thank you, thank you.
Vin, could you trace that $10 million through the system? Like, it goes to the town. Does it come back to us? When does it come back?
It doesn't come back to us. It's budgeted, just look at it this way. The town's overall budget is $110 million expense budget, just making that up, and they know that $10 million of revenue is coming in from the state. And they know that 10 million dollars of revenue is coming in from the state. So when they look at the overall budget and they set the mill rate, they know that this revenue is coming in.
Okay, thank you.
So the costs associated with any of these are included, the costs are included in our Board of Ed operating budget. But there's an understanding that we know 10 million dollars of revenue is coming in from the state.
From the state? Just the building use rental fee or the tuition for the preschool?
These are all, just making, other than building use fee, because that's collected from the users.
From the users.
These are all state, correct?
The grant, yes, the tuition for a smart start.
Which one? I'm sorry, yes.
Well, that's what I thought, that people pay tuition for birth to three, correct?
And that goes to the town too, yeah.
So a quick question. Does that also include tuition from families that choose to send a student to Cheshire and pay the per pupil cost?
I'm sorry.
So does the tuition preschool smart start integrated programs also include tuition that we charge for folks bringing their, sending their kids to Cheshire School Systems that don't live in town?
No child out of Cheshire.
Yeah, we only service children from Cheshire.
So nobody outside of Cheshire send their kids to Cheshire and paying for it?
Correct.
Thank you.
Good. Can move on? Okay, thank you. Okay, a couple of, a couple of points on per pupil expenditures. I know Superintendent Solon spent some time with this on it during his presentation. But this is the per pupil expenditures by school district in district reference group B. You can see the names of the towns that have similar socio-economic conditions as Cheshire. And Cheshire is on the low end of the per pupil spending. What this green bar depicts is the amount of that educational cost sharing revenue that we receive. So you could see that, you know, there's really four towns that receive a fairly large amount of educational cost sharing revenue. But a town like Madison, who's similar socio-economically, they get less than a million dollars of educational cost sharing revenue per year. So if I take that information and I put it into a slightly different presentation, what I'm doing here is I'm taking the net per pupil cost, in the case of Cheshire, is 16,514. And then I factor in, well, what's the per pupil educational cost sharing money we receive? So this 14,311 represents what the net cost to the taxpayers is per student in Cheshire. And you could see that, you know, we're among the lowest in the state. So not only is our per pupil cost, based on how we manage our budget, attractive, but the amount of funding we get from ECS helps ease the burden on the taxpayers as well.
So the most in the state, but this is your GED. Are you saying that the ERG is the most expensive in the state, therefore we're the least expensive or the most expensive?
Well, we're the lower expensive in our, in our DIRG. But I've never run this across the state.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, this is just the superintendent's budget recommendation after, you know, we completed the process is 2,973,541 dollar increase, which is 4.05% of the existing budget of 73.36 million dollars. So how does, you know, how does this compare as it relates to the things that aren't included in the budget? And I'm not going to go through this list. I know it's available in the presentation and it's online. But you could see that there's new equipment, technology and software. There's replacement equipment, staffing requests and some other requests that were made. These did not make it into the budget. Some of these comes from the new program request that I referenced in our, in our slide when I talked about process. Some of the items that did make it into the budget are the things that we mentioned on the staffing side. The point eight math interventionist, the two hall monitors, the addition of the two special education teachers. You know, those came through that process, but we could not fit these into the budget. I don't have the dollars associated with it. We didn't price everything out, but you know, if we did price it out, it would be over a million dollars worth of requests that came in that we just couldn't justify. And again, as board members review this, if you want to go back and discuss any particular item, we could do that. But I just wanted to give you a sense of the magnitude of the items that we review as part of the budget process. Yes. I mean, ultimately, it's the superintendent's decision as to what's recommended in the budget. But it is a very collaborative process. And as I said, we do sit down with the department managers, the principals, you know, and talk through some of these items. You know, the smaller ones, we may be able to fund as we get through the course of the year. Things like, you know, requests to replace tables and furniture, some of the maintenance items. We'll, we'll try and fund those as we get into April and May. If there's, if the budget's doing well and there's sufficient funding, you know, we don't throw the list away. We keep it so that we, we can get to it. And the principals typically don't let us forget what they've asked for, so. And that's what you'd want to see. I mean, we, you know, one thing that we do as part of our budget is we always, you know, reiterate with the department budget managers, tell us what you need, you know, don't try and skimp on the requests. Because we need to have an understanding of what are the items that are out there that we need to fund.
Are these that included in the, your wish list budget, your first, what is 79 million dollars, that's 7% increase?
Some were, but most weren't.
Okay.
Okay, so there was a little bit of overlap. They never made it into the budget. Because we asked, you know, like staffing requests, we asked no one, do not enter that as a line item in your budget. Just put it on a separate program request. We do this in Google Docs, so it's a shared form that's used and analyzed across the district. So right, if, if we had included that, the request would come in even higher than the 7%. The superintendent Solon did, you know, present this. So this is kind of a narrowed down list of, well, if we could do some of the things, you know, these are the higher priority ones that we would try to include in our budget. Again, it's available for discussion. I just wanted to put it out there. Okay, so now with all that background out of the way, we're going to start hitting some of the numbers. The overall budget request of 2.9 million and 76,330,052 is the total amount of the superintendent's proposed budget. You'll see that 64% is for salaries. That's certified and non-certified, we'll go through the breakdown. 16% is for benefits. So 79%, 79.6% actually of the budget is salaries and benefits. And then if we look at this in a, in a slightly different way, which I'll get to in a minute, 94.7% of the budget request is for the large fixed cost. And you could see that the, beyond the salaries and benefits, you know, 9% of the total budget for the school district is for what we call support services. The bulk of that is transportation. Student transportation is over 3.5 million dollars per year in terms of cost. This slice here is instructional expense and it includes things like, you know, curriculum-related textbooks, technology. And it includes a portion of special education, specifically outplaced tuition for students we can't serve and pupil services for consulting services that we need. And then the last chunk, this 5%, 3.9 million, is for the maintenance of our buildings and operations, a large piece of which is utilities, electricity as well as heat. Okay, so that's the total budget picture. These are the largest components of our budget. So what you see here is salaries is 48.8 million, 64% of the budget. If we then add benefits, which is 11.9 million, that gets us to 79% of our total budget. Transportation, if we add in fuel and insurance for the, for the buses and the Board of Ed vehicles, that gets us to about 84 and 84.8% of the budget. If we then add in special ed tuition, that gets us to almost 89%. Then you add utilities, heat, contract payments that we have to make against our energy performance contract, which will come up on next Tuesday, that gets us to 91%. And then if we add the last roughly 3% for facilities, cleaning of our buildings, maintenance, supplies and repairs, that gets us to 94.7% of our budget. These are items that you couldn't cut immediately or you couldn't cut at all, like student transportation. We do our best to economize and reduce the cost of transportation over the years, but you have to provide these services. So that leaves 5.3%. And I'm calling them variable costs, but you know, they are costs that have an impact if you were to reduce them, but they're not fixed costs. They're easier to reduce. And so what happens as we manage through our budget or when there are actual budget reductions made, these are the line items that we typically, you know, will, will cut against. And again, we're going to go through the details of these line items as we get into, into next Tuesday's presentation. So I'll pause here to see if there's any questions yet.
I was just looking at the two columns there. You have the budget request and then the cumulative dollar of total budget. What is the difference, they seem to be?
So what I'm saying here is the 624,000 is 0.8% of the budget. Then if you add in instructional supply, I did this in order of large to small. So if I add in instructional supply, now it's 1.1 million cumulative.
Oh, okay, all right.
And 1.5%. So I'm just trying to show you how you get to the 5.3% starting from the largest to the smallest.
Thank you.
Okay, taking us one level deeper. Won't spend a lot of time on this, but you know, this is the 2.9 million dollars and how it's been allocated. So salaries would increase 3.04% under this budget. That's the 1,441 that you see here. Benefits, we're requesting an increase of 7.1%. We'll talk about that. Maintenance, 8.1%. Instructional expense, 6.1%. And support services, 2.51%. So that's just a depiction of the breakdown of that 2.9 million dollars that's being requested. And we're going to go through the line item details starting now. So salaries, an important component of why salaries change has to do with the increases that our employees received. But the other factors that affect total salary cost are adding or decreasing the number of employees or replacing employees. That can have a large impact, especially with our teachers. Teachers that retire retire at the highest salary. It's step 14 in the salary grid. If they're replaced by a step one teacher, the difference in salaries is roughly 55 to 60,000 dollars. So just by that replacement of a retiree, there is a reduction, you know, to that person's salary in the budget. So what you see here is a historical view of what the union contract wage increases have been. We're in 2020, 21 in budget world. So you could see that the secretary's wage increase this year contractual is 2.65%. Instructional assistants, instructional assistants are primarily part-time employees. Their increase is 3%. Their starting wage this year is 1350 an hour. The 3% wage increase, which we just negotiated in that contract, you know, it was 3% because we have to make sure that we're able to not violate the minimum wage for this employee group, which if you don't know, the minimum wage went up to 11 dollars an hour October 1st of this year. And it goes up a dollar per hour every 11 months. So we wanted to make sure that we had sufficient ability when that contract runs out to ensure that we're meeting minimum wage. So that increase was a little higher than the other two groups that we bargained with this year. Facilities group, their increase is 2.625% actually this year. The teachers' increase, including step, is 3.2% this year. They're at the end, again, we're in budget year, so this budget that you're looking at expires June 20th, uh, June 30th of 2021. These two columns are to be determined because we will begin negotiating with the teachers in July for a new contract. So their four-year contract is coming to an end. And I will mention that this was an arbitrated contract, so those percentages you see are what resulted from arbitration. And our administrators, which are our principals, assistant principals, other positions in the district where they have state certification, their wage increase contractually is 2.25%. So the average this year is 2.75%. So that's what's built into the, to the wages that are presented as part of this budget. And also the administrative personnel, their contract expires. So board will be negotiating that contract as well this year.
For the, the average increase, did you do a weighted average? You said not weighted, so I would assume that if you waited, it would actually be?
I just did a straight average.
Would it actually be higher?
It would be, it would tend higher than that because the teachers, sorry about that. The teachers are the largest group and they have the 3.2%. So yes, that, that would skew a little bit higher. I don't, I didn't do that math. Trying to make it simple.
So there's what, there's about 350 certified staff? Is that, what's the number?
If you look at FTs, it's about 400.
400. I mean, how many of that is, how many of that number is teachers, just as an example, to what I'm getting at? Do you know how many classroom teachers out of the 400?
Of the certified staff, we have 20.6 that are administrators, so the difference, 380?
So, oh, so.
380 are teachers.
Oh, so IAs are not certified or they don't count as certified? You have 380 classroom teachers is the point?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
So I'm just wondering, on an, on an annual basis, what's the typical turnover, like the trend over the last few years?
For teachers?
Yeah. And I realize some teachers might leave after three years, some might leave after 37 and a half, but.
I don't have a turnover rate. It's pretty low with teachers, pretty high with instructional assistants. So that's where, you know, the turnover rate, if I had to guess for teachers, including retirements, I mean, we have, we had seven retirements last year.
Maybe 10 a year.
So that, I mean, to me, if it's 380 and they, if that would divide it by 10, that'd be like, everybody stays for 37 and a half years for classroom teachers? Wouldn't that make sense?
Well, we don't, you know, we don't hire everybody right out of school, so, you know.
Okay.
There, we have very low turnover.
Okay.
With our teaching staff. As Vin said, the instructional assistants, there's significantly more turnover. But our educational, our teaching staff is limited turnover.
So with regard to, this might be for personnel, actually, I'm just wondering, do you have like one or two, maybe three points why there's a high turnover with IAs? We could take it up later if you want, but. You could hypothesize.
I think there's, there's a few reasons. One is the wage relative to other wages that are available in the marketplace these days. Right, so they start at 1350 an hour. And, you know, their movement is going to be based on that general wage increase that I showed you. And not all groups are 3%. There's actually, one group is at 2 and 1/4. There's actually, one group is a two and a quarter in that group, one group is three and a quarter, three percent's the average. So some of it has to do with wage and availability of other opportunities. It's a part-time position, it's twenty-eight point seven five hours, some are thirty, some are thirty-two. So, you know, I think people look for more full-time work. I think it is a starter-type position. There's not a lot of ability to move up, other than if you're instructional assistant and you become trained to do ABA, DTI, the wage is significantly higher. Instead of thirteen fifty, it's over twenty dollars per hour. But there's not a lot of those ABA, DTI who work primarily with children that have autism, Tracy. So I think it's that. I think those are the primary reasons. You know, one of the things that we did do as part of this last negotiation, you know, what was important to that group was availability of medical benefits. And I think that kind of gives you a sense of, the employees are looking to have a place where they could stay and receive medical benefits. So we did reduce their cost of medical benefits in this new contract. They're still paying more than our full-time employees, but it is better than it used to be. So, you know, we're trying to make some improvements that are reasonable so that we can get that turnover rate, you know, in line. Well, part-time, they're all less than thirty-five hours.
So no benefits?
They do get benefits.
They do.
Well, under the law, I guess that's why I paused for a second. So under the law, full-time now is considered thirty hours. But they don't get the same level of medical benefits as a thirty-five hour employee. So it's basically prorated. Cost question? Yes?
An observation and a question. I chuckled earlier because when you said, when you answered this question, why does turnover, you mentioned it was a low wage job, there was like a group head knot going out, that everybody was nodding, so it was like a wave. But I've heard that too, as being the factor almost every year. Second, before we go any further, I think we have, not to put Crystal on the spot, but we have one person from an outside group, Sue wants to hear more about fees. I might oppose to something that, we'll be talking about that tonight or Tuesday night. Actually, most of the presentation tonight's on support services, certified staff. We have a chance toward the end of the meeting to talk about some of that, or is that something we're going to plan on doing Tuesday night, more depth, or perhaps the third meeting?
Well, the other impact to budget is the custodians, which is non-certified, which is the next section. So we could talk about it there. But Jeff and I have started working on some more detail around costs, athletic, and not athletic only, but extracurricular costs related to what our students take advantage of here in the district.
And we're going to go to that tonight or next meeting?
Next Tuesday night is the plan, correct, Jeff?
Yeah, I just want to put it out there, and we'll have questions. I mean, I'm not sure when you want people to ask questions, but after the... Just to let folks know, if you're wondering or if you're watching this recording, we've asked the administration, Jeff Vincent and others, put together kind of a fee breakdown schedule for facilities, for custodial fees, the true cost of sports, which you'd be surprised is not actually reflected in this budget. So I think it's important to get all that out there, so we're all working off the facts that's coming. We'll get some of that tonight, we'll get more Tuesday night, and I believe there's a third meeting that, if we can't get through all of that by Tuesday, I would ask the finance committee to leverage a third meeting to focus on that. So just, it's coming, is the point. So, thank you.
Yeah, another thought that just crossed my mind in relation to wages. Those five categories basically make up everybody there, the, for the schools.
There's a small, there's a couple of groups that are non-union. Food service, Board of Ed bus drivers, and the non-union management staff, and I guess the three administrators, myself, Jeff and Marlene, that are not part of a bargaining unit.
Okay.
But the wages for those groups fall in line to the non-certified categories.
Yes, it's slightly related to wages. I'm just wondering, of the groups, state or town pension?
So teachers and administrative personnel, neither. Teachers and administrative personnel fund their own pension, so there's no cost to the district. And we're going to talk about pensions tonight.
That's what I meant by state pension.
Yeah.
Don't they, I thought teachers get a pension through the state.
They get a pension from the state, but it's not funded through our budget.
Okay.
Okay. Other groups, so that's the non-certified group, secretaries, custodians and instructional assistants. If they were hired before July of 2012, they could be in the town's pension plan.
Okay.
Assuming they didn't waive, because some employees never took advantage of it. Employees hired after July one of 2012 in those non-certified groups, they have a defined contribution plan that they're eligible for, and I'll give you some of those details tonight. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, 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 thank you.
So, Tim, this is, you know, the question you had. How many certified salary, how many certified employees? We have four hundred certified employees, of which the teachers represent the largest portion of that. So this thirty-eight million six seventy-two, three forty-two, that's the total budget requested for certified salaries. You see here it's fifty point seven percent of the total budget requested. Last year, if you do the math, it was fifty-one point one percent of the budget. And you see that the other categories here are the administrators, we have directors and supervisors. Included in certified salaries is the cost of substitutes, and we'll show you in the next slide some more detail on each of these. Student activities, which does relate to sports, is also budgeted in this category. That's primarily student activities, that's primarily the cost of paying stipends for our coaches who do athletics, music instruction, any other club, whether it's robotics or any of the other stipends that our teachers would receive, so that's why it's budgeted under certified. It doesn't mean that all those people are certified, but that's where it falls in the budget. Homebound and tutoring is also part of this category because that is primarily done by certified staff. And also there's the adult ed budget that we were talking about earlier. So if we look at this in terms of the line items that are in your budget book, so I just basically pulled this right out of the budget book so we can talk through it, and I'll give you some high-level information here that I think is important. You'll see that administration, administration is five hundred fifty-eight thousand, that's three people, that's myself, the superintendent and assistant superintendent Solano. You see that the increase is one point one four percent. The reason for that is we did have monies budgeted last year for Scott Dietrich and Don Wolonis, who were, you know, working as interim. We had some overlap. So when we pull those funds out, it actually doesn't lower this budget line, but it makes it look lower, you know, than the raises that might be expected for that group. Directors and supervisors, those are in line with the certified salaries. But you see principals is, looks like the principals are only getting a point four nine percent increase, if that's what it was. But we have four retired administrators. As part of their contract, when they retired, they received incentives based on the number of years of service, and they got paid over several years. Well, as it turns out, all four of those expired, so that reduces the amount that's in that salary line. So, you know, the, just again, going back to what we presented earlier, the principals are in the administrator line, two point two five percent is the contractual wage increase. They will get that, but the budget impact this year, because we have those incentives falling off, is only point four nine percent. Teachers, the reason this is three point three, the raises are three point two percent, has to do with the two additional teachers that are being added. And I do want to just point out, not necessarily to get into a lot of detail here, but, you know, there are other things that impact the, you know, teacher line. So if a teacher gets their sixth-year degree, or they get an advanced degree, if they go from bachelor's to master's, they get an increase in pay that's above the contractual wage, so that would show up in this category. That's why you'll see some, you know, numbers that don't look necessarily in line with the contractual wage increase, it's because there are those other factors. Somebody retires, as I said, that's a teacher at top step, and we hire, you know, someone at first step, that reduces the budget. The one thing that is in the budget book that I found to be interesting is when we negotiated the contract with the teachers, we expected in this fourth year of the contract to have about seventy percent of our teachers at top step. And because of retirements that we've had over the last several years, about fifty-eight point nine percent, eight percent of the teachers are at top step. So again, that does help our budget. Substitutes, you see that we're requesting a, an increase of thirty-four thousand dollars. You know, we, our substitute costs, you know, have varied over the years, but we just need that, you know, to fall in line to what we expect to need for next year. Same thing with this homebound and tutoring line. We do provide tutoring services to students for a number of different reasons, ranging from student has a concussion, we have to provide services, you know, for that student if they can't be in school. We are, we do have students that are homebound for a variety of reasons. We, under law, have to provide them an education, so we'll provide those tutoring services. And I'm not sure, Tracy, if you're going to go into some more detail in your presentation on this topic.
Do you have to plug it?
You don't have to, I'm just, you don't have to, I'm not asking, I just, I wasn't sure, so...
Well, certainly if people have questions, I'd like to.
But again, services that we have to provide, they fall under this category, and we do provide them. And we certainly provide some of that tutoring inside our buildings, you know, most of the tutoring that gets done that isn't, you know, homebound, is done in the Humiston Building. Student activities, we touched on that a little bit, but student activities covers all the stipends that we pay. There is offsetting revenue to that, and that comes in the form of the participation fees that students pay to play a sport, participate in extracurricular activities. That revenue is about a hundred fifty thousand dollars per year. This is all explained in the budget book, but there is offsetting revenue. And when we show you these, these total cost of extracurricular activities, you know, next week, we'll include the offsetting dollar amount, so you, the board can get a sense of what that looks like. And then finally, adult education, you know, this is the operating cost of the adult education program. We saw earlier that there is twenty-six thousand dollars in revenue that comes from the state for those programs. So if you take all of that into consideration, certified salaries will increase one point one seven one million, about three point one two percent over where it is today. And this last is just a point of reference that the 2019-20 budget does reflect a forty thousand dollar reduction. Last year, when the budget came back and was reduced by the town council, one of the places the board applied that reduction was in this line because we had a net of four teacher retirements. We did add that the board's recommendation, one school psychologist and a half-time special education teacher. But because of the four retirements, we were still able to reduce this budget line. And you'll see, as we go through the rest of the budget, I'll just point out where the reductions were in those lines from the 1920 budget.
Vin, I'm just trying to understand a couple of the lines here. So you explained on line one fourteen, we had the reduction of forty thousand. But it looks like there's a significant difference between 1819 and 1920. Had we budgeted for seven hundred ninety-eight thousand in 1819, or was that a, I don't recall that as being a, an over expenditure on that line?
Yeah, that wasn't, we exceeded the budget.
We did, okay.
Yeah. But we were under budget in teachers, so those two offset each other to some degree.
Was there a particular reason why we were surprised by the additional amount?
You know, managing the, the reason that we incur substitute costs ranges from teachers out for maternity or long-term. Also, a lot of that has to do with professional development that we do. So when we schedule professional development, and we do it during the day, we have to hire substitutes. And then obviously, if employees call out sick and we need to have a substitute, it's covered through that line item. So it's a variety of things, like, I can't pinpoint, standing here, what happened in that, in that particular year, but they, we do typically see an offset to the teacher line item. So like everything else we do, you know that we, the way we manage our budget is we are very conservative about those non-payroll accounts. We freeze at sixty percent until we're confident that we'll be able to meet our budget.
And so if I recall from, at least from the last business meeting report, it seemed like the substitute expenditure was in line with expectation as far as, because I know there's been increases in, in the teacher training for all the additional state mandates and such. So for this year, we're at least, we're in line at, it looks like six hundred sixteen thousand, so that, so right now, that's okay, and...
We're trying.
Right.
You know, and we do, we do a number of things to try and manage this, you know. One is, you know, to look at absenteeism rate, if we have chronic absenteeism, that does get addressed. You know, we do try and avoid scheduling PD on Mondays and Fridays, because that is the day that, you know, we'll see more people out sick on those two days, so makes the problem worse if we schedule PD on those days. And it's something that, you know, we are looking at. We actually have talked to Kelly Services that provides substitute coverage, because not only is the cost an issue, but sometimes getting sufficient subs is a dilemma for the school district as well. So, you know, we're looking at a number of ways to try and make sure we have coverage and try to manage the expense as well. You know, and the, you know, same holds true for homebound, that does vary. The year before, in seventeen eighteen, you know, that line item was a hundred sixty-five thousand or so actually expended. So the, those are the variances that we do manage year over year.
And lastly, on the student activities line, that is not the same as the student activities account.
Correct.
Okay. So, because I just wasn't sure if, all right, so is that something you'll get into when you're talking about total cost of athletics and/or other student activities, you'll touch on...
Student activity account funding?
Yeah, yes.
To the extent it's related to team sports, yes.
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 So that is just expenditure from our budget for salaries for coaches and for mentors and...
Correct. Band instructors and robotics, you know...
Okay. So that's, that's not like an inflow, and then we show it as an expenditure?
No, 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 no. That is not a reflection of the student activity money that sits in every school that the, you know, basically the staff at the local school controls.
Okay.
That is an expense that is incurred to provide the coverage for student activities. It's probably a bad name, considering what you're asking.
Yeah.
But that's, it's coaching stipend.
So we'll cover that at another meeting then?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Could we change the name, or is that a state law? I'm just curious, because it is misleading to me. Not that it's intentional, I'm just saying.
No, I don't, well, I don't know that it's a state law. There is a federal guide to, the chart of accounts.
Oh, it is, it is a...
There's a uniform chart of accounts.
Okay.
So that, designed so that it's easier to compare district to district.
Yeah, no, I get it, I get it.
What's going on, but...
Okay.
They're not always great.
Yeah, sure. No, I understand. Thank you.
Just to put a little kind of context around the, you know, we know that the cost of teachers is a relatively large portion of our budget. cost of teachers is a relatively large portion of our budget. But if you look at the total number of general education teachers, and how many students they serve, and again, this is all DURG B, right, same socioeconomic communities, Cheshire has 15.7 students per teacher. So we're at the high end of our DURG. You could see here, Orange, Madison, Bethany, they're all below 14 students per teacher on average. So I think that all this really does is puts into perspective that we're not overstaffed relative to other DURG B districts. You know, we know that our student's success is, is very, very good performance-wise. So we're not asking to move down, or move up in this list, but it's always good to have a little bit of context where we stand relative to our peers. Okay. So this is a chart you'll see for each of the major budget categories. So this is certified salaries as a percent of our total budget. So this is not saying that certified salaries are decreasing, but it is decreasing as a percent of the total budget. So some of the things driving that are, we, you know, we have reduced teachers as student enrollment has dropped. But we also see that, you know, our certified salaries, the stat I was explaining earlier, that about 58% of our teachers are at top step instead of 71% as projected, that also goes into that mix here. But this also means, is that you'll see in some of the other areas, like non-certified salaries, those are going up as a percentage of the budget. Okay? So this is something that's in the budget book, and, and we'll just give you a little bit of reference, I think, is what this chart does. So that's it with certified salaries. Keep moving? Is there a question in there, Mr. White?
I thought you were about to get to it before. You can cut me off if you're going to get to it. But with regard to the pension versus, what is it, a 403B?
Yeah, I'm gonna get to that.
Okay.
Right after, what time is it? 8:15. Okay. I'll try and move a little quicker, because we have non-certified salaries and benefits to go. So non-certified salaries, again, the categories are instructional assistants, managers and supervisors, secretaries, custodian, maintenance. Support, support includes a variety of different individuals. It includes our playground lunchroom aides. It includes our technology assistants. It includes the media techs that work in the library. It also includes our occupational therapists. They are not certified staff with the state of Connecticut. Speech, speech pathologist is, but an occupational therapist does not. So they fall into that support category. And again, in the budget book, it, it explains, you know, the detail of who's in those accounts. Drivers here, these are the Board of Education drivers. So you know that we contract our transportation services with DATCO, but we also have our own fleet of a dozen vehicles with our own drivers. We do that because we can operate, including the cost of, you know, maintaining, buying, maintaining, and servicing those buses is still cheaper than the DATCO rates. So we do that for most of our in-town runs where we can. Those drivers also provide services like courier service between the buildings. They deliver food from Chapman to Darcy. So they do a variety of things. And then health services is our nurses. So just very quickly, I'll, I'll top-line you here. Instructional assistants, you know, the reason that's going up 4.8% instead of that contracted 3%, there's a variety of things happening with this, within this account with some retirements and replacement with lower-paid staff. But we also added instructional assistants this year that we're carrying into next year's budget. So that's why it's higher than, than the wage increase. Managers and supervisors, that 8.39% is being driven by one thing, because the budget is about 3% wage increase. But we did add a school security manager into this year's budget, 1920, but we only budgeted 50,000. The salary of that person is expected to be 70,000. So for this year's budget, we're carrying the additional 20,000 for that person. Otherwise, that would fall right in line with what we would expect to see. You could see secretaries, custodian, maintenance wages, actually a little bit lower than their contracted wage rates. Again, some of that has to do with, with retirements. Support, we did have one long-term employee who was at the highest level of pay, you know, reduced her hours to, from full-time to a point two. So that actually saved us some, some funding dollars there. Drivers are in line with what we would expect. And health services, the only reason that's going down is because we did have Barbara Ruddy, our head nurse, long-term employee, you know, retired. So, you know, we did replace her with somebody who's also very good, but right now is making less. So that, that does help the budget. Okay? I'll keep moving unless there's a question. So non-certified salaries, this is what I was mentioning earlier. So as a percent of budget, it's increasing. What are the drivers of that? So what you'll see here in this column is the annual growth rate over this period of time of the wages for these employee groups. Now, the 9% is 9% because we've added instructional assistants over this period of time. And again, that's primarily to provide support to special education students, although we did have a couple of instructional assistants that are classroom instructional assistants that were added. We've had to add the, to the number of drivers we have because we have more specialized routes that we're doing in town. One of the programs that Tracy, you know, we'll probably talk about is the transition program, where students who are above the age of 18 until they're 21, if they need special education services, they are of responsibility. And part of the transition program is to give them some real-life and employment opportunities. So we are providing transportation to those students throughout the day, and we've had to increase our drivers to do that. And it is a much more cost-effective way than hiring our contractor to do that. And the manager supervisor, again, that's because we added one school, school security manager. The rest of these are in line. So, you know, the, the driver is, the driver is primarily the addition of instructional assistance to support the special education needs. And if you didn't see it in the Record Journal, Southington, this past week submitted, or they presented their budget, superintendent presented, you know, his budget, and there's a large increase in the number of employees they need to provide special education services. So we're clearly not alone. It is a common denominator here in the state, as well as across the country. Moving right along to employee benefits. So this particular category is about 15.6% of the budget of the 11.8 million dollars. Most of that you could see is medical, dental, and the, the increase recommended there is about 8%. Social Security for non-certified staff is also budgeted here. We'll talk about the pension plan. That's increasing 3%. Workers' comp and unemployment and life insurance and disability insurance is all part of the employee benefits budget. This is the one thing I do want to note, that for 1920, so this budget, it reflects a $500,000 reduction from what was requested by the superintendent, because we have a healthy reserve balance, which we'll go through. But I also want to point out that we also reduced this budget 200,000 the prior year, and then 716,000 in 1718. That's primarily, this decrease was primarily because we left our Blue Care HMO account was fully insured. It's now self-insured, and it saved us substantial dollars. So we, we have been able to, you know, reduce the superintendent's requests at the board level in medical benefits, but we are reaching a point where we do need to seriously start funding that up to meet the expected claims. Okay. So this is gonna take me a couple of minutes. So the request for medical benefits is 9,79,474, an increase of 689,100. So where does that come from? Well, it's, it's a net number. This is the only point that I want to make on this particular slide. In this is 9.1 million for expected claims. We also pay for stop-loss insurance. That premium next year is expected to be 790,000. That protects us. Any claim that's over 175,000, that stop-loss insurance would pay us back. And roughly, we receive about $500,000 per year in stop-loss reimbursement. However, two years ago was over a million. So that would cause big swings in our medical benefits line, which is why we have it. It's important that we have that. 620,000 is employees that participate in the HSA, High Deductible Health Plan. They have an HSA account. As part of our agreement, we fund those employees either, depending on what bargaining group they're in, anywhere from 500 to $2,000 per year. Administrative fees is what we pay Cigna. We went to Cigna July 1st of this year, after being with Anthem for decades. So this is a pretty significant reduction in what we paid in previous years. In previous years, it was over a half a million dollars. So that move was, was quite attractive from that point of view. 80,400 employees who are entitled to medical benefits, who waive, receive a payment in accordance with their contract. And we also have an employee assistance program and wellness programs that we run, 10,500. So this is an important number. Our actual cost of medical benefits, if you will, is 10,907,000. But our employees, as part of their bargaining unit agreements, and even those that are not in a union, they pay for a portion of their medical benefits coverage. And so they pay 1.47 million. In all of our contracts, the rate that they pay has been going up every year. And then we have retirees who we have to cover because they're not Medicare-eligible. These are pre-1987 employees. They don't have access to Medicare, so by state law, we have to keep them in our plans. They, they do pay us directly for that participation, and that's what that is. So if you take that, minus what the employees and the retirees pay, that's how I get to that 9,79,000. Well, what's in that funding for claims? Medical, prescription, dental. Those are the programs that we provide coverage for, for our employees. Well then, how did I get to that claim number? USI is our consultant for our benefit plans, medical, dental, prescription. You could see here that their initial renewal, based on the period, they do a one-year claims run rate, December 1 through November 30. They think that our claims cost will go up 7.4%. We're budgeting a little bit more than that, because we haven't been budgeting to our claim rate. We've been budgeting below our claim rate. So we're budgeting around 8%.
In the prior slide, you had $350,000 for retiree direct pays?
Yeah.
Is that basically a wash? That's what you spend, and that's what they contribute?
No. It's what they pay for their premium.
Okay.
But their claims could be substantially higher than that.
Do you have any idea what it might be in a typical year? If you don't, that's okay.
Yeah, I don't know.
I just figured out it, okay.
I don't know.
But it probably is higher than that number.
I would, I would expect, because these are older employees.
Yeah.
You know, so typically, their expense would be higher as they age. But it's not, you know, we don't receive reports that show us employee by employee.
Is, is that OPEB? Or is it different?
It's, well, you could call it, it's a post-employee benefit, right? But it's one that's just a kind of a legacy employment benefit.
Okay.
Because anybody that's hired after 1987 does pay into Medicare. And when I say anybody, anybody who's a certified teacher or administrator. So at some point in time, that goes away.
Okay. So that's not the OPEB number, then?
No, OPEB, you know, typically talks about, I mean, we don't have a lot in the way of, of OPEB, like the police have their, you know, heart and hypertension, those types of coverages. Is that what you're thinking?
No, I mean, I'm, I'm going back 10 years to the council, but it was a big number.
No, they still?
And it was, as far as I had remembered it, it was like, it was gonna be 2 million a year for the, if enforced. I don't know if it ever actually came to be.
That number is still carried in the town's financials.
Okay.
So that is still a realistic issue.
So, but you don't have it in your budget anywhere?
No.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. All you need to know here is, we offer four basic plan types. The high deductible health plan is the main plan that we offer our employees. We also have an HMO and PPO. You know, that's coverage that's available. But if employees select either of these two plans, they pay the full difference in cost across the school district now. So it's cost-neutral to us if employees go into either of those two plans. But we do try and work with our employees to get them into the high, high deductible health plan, because it's to their benefit, you know, as well as the school districts. An element's choice is a plan that provides minimal coverage in accordance with the law. It's, it's bronze-level coverage. It was introduced as part of the Affordable Care Act, steps that we needed to take. We don't have many employees in that plan, but, you know, it does meet the coverage requirements. And then our employees do have dental. Typically, though, employees, they, employees have to pay a cost share, including to cover, they pay the full cost for dependents and spouse. But dependents fall off at age 19 under dental. The other plans under law have, their dependents can stay on until they're age 26. Just a couple of things here. I mean, we, we work hard to try and keep our, you know, medical benefits costs as much as we can. You know, we share, you know, with the town. Like, when we went out to bid for Cigna, we did that collectively with the town. We do collaborate with the town on different wellness initiatives now. So we are trying to manage to keep these costs as low as we possibly can. One of the key reasons we moved to Cigna, in addition to lowering our administrative fees, is they have a very aggressive health and wellness program, and they're giving us $55,000 a year, you know, for health and wellness programs. And the hope is that over time, it does reduce the overall cost of claims. And those programs will cover things like hypertension and diabetes and, and management of those programs, which if treated early, prevent larger claims later in life. I'm gonna just kind of flip through this a little bit quicker. As I said, the HSA has been a focus. You know, if you look back 10 years, we had 26 employees in the HSA. We now have 328 of our covered employees in an HSA. That's 68% of the employee population. You could see by group, you know, what the coverage is there. The instructional assistance, you know, is, is the lowest group, but, you know, they're actually better served than some of the other programs based on the way their, their plans are structured. But I do expect that to increase now that we've changed the union contract. Okay. So the crux of, of really what I want to talk about tonight is, you know, our medical benefits costs have been relatively stable. They've increased, but they've increased lower than the industry average. You know, they're increasing about 4% per year. And in the last three years, we've not funded with contributions from our budget to meet our claims rate. So claims are higher than we're contributing right now. And the recommendation in this budget is to try and match the contributions we make to the claims we expect to receive. So how this works, because I know we have three new board members, and everybody else in this room has been here before, probably hates this slide at this point. But from our operating budget, that, you know, 9.1 million, we're, we're requesting for claims. What happens is, every month, we take What happens is every month, we take a portion, 1/12 of that, $9 million if it were approved, and we literally put it into this reserve fund. And then as claims come in every month, we pay the claims out of this reserve. And so that's done intentionally so that we don't have to fund, claims vary. So one month, we could have $500,000 worth of claims. Another month, a million dollars' worth of claims. You don't want to have to report your operating budget swings in those types of increments. So we put a consistent amount from our budget into this reserve fund. And then as claims come up, if they're higher or lower, it's paid out of the reserve. So that's the primary reason why we do that. So what we put in is very controllable. What the claims are depends on, you know, what's happening in the lives of our employees. And so what this shows is, well, what's the end-of-year balance been in that fund over history? And you could see that back in 2011, it was over 3 million. We were living through a similar period where we had a healthy reserve and we didn't fund contributions equal with claims. So what started to happen is the reserve fund depleted. And then we got into scary territory because you want to have at least two months' worth of reserves to cover claims. This was below two months. It was about a month and a half. And actually, we got to as low as $200,000. It was just, you know, at the end of the fiscal year, the balance was of 750,000. Well, how'd this reserve balance go up? Simple. We had a 5% budget increase and then a 3.5% budget increase. So we had to increase the budget to start putting enough money into that reserve fund so that we could cover our claims. And the reserve fund built up very, very nicely. Because our claims have been managed, you know, to the extent we can. So as of November 1st, I don't have the December numbers, but I do expect to have them for the board meeting. We're at 3.4 million, so we have about 4.57 months' worth of claims in reserve. But it is declining. So in the period 2013 to 2017, what was happening here? We had, this was claims, these were contributions. So this was an increase in the reserve balance, right? Hopefully, that's easy to follow. From '17 to '20, when we weren't funding claims through our operating budget because we're relying on the healthy reserves we have, we have the opposite effect. So here's where our claims have been from '17 through '20, and here's our contributions. So what's happening to the reserve fund? We peaked here in 2018, roughly July. And by the end of this year, I expect that we'll be at about $2.9 million. So still not a bad reserve, but it is trending down. So if we don't start funding claims with contributions that equal those claims, then what's going to happen is we're going to have to come back and ask for a large budget increase. So that's kind of the issue. And I would suspect we may get into more detail on this, maybe not tonight, but that it's going to be a subject of debate. And I can provide further information. I didn't want to overload it tonight, but I could provide some more numbers as it relates to this. So that's one of the issues that's in our budget. The last point I want to make on medical benefits is that the Affordable Care Act, you know, has been, the effects we expect to be less impactful in the future. This was all the things that we had to do related to the Affordable Care Act. It was, it was pretty intense. Some provisions of the Affordable Care Act were knocked out. What wasn't knocked out that I just want to make sure the board members are aware is this provision. We must, under the Affordable Care Act, offer 95 percent of our eligible employees coverage that's adequate and affordable. If we fail to do that, the penalty, you know, for us is $2,000 times all our employees that are eligible. Whether or not they're getting it, doesn't matter. So we won't miss that one. You know, we're very careful to offer it. So what is this, what's the impact? The elements choice, that bronze-level coverage, we offer that to all employees. And the way the law works is if you're full-time at 30 hours, you must be, that coverage must be offered to you. You don't have to take it as long as we offer it. We have careful records that show that we are, you know, offering it to all eligible employees. So there is reporting that's required every year around that. The big concern has now gone away, and that was the Cadillac tax. You know, that was completely repealed just recently. So the impact of the Affordable Care Act, while some of the costs linger, not much that we need to worry about going forward as it relates to the Cadillac tax. Any questions on medical benefits? Because now we're going to talk pension.
Yeah. Just going back for a second. If I heard you correctly, you said that Cigna gave, Cigna's giving us $55,000 for health and wellness?
Yes.
So where's that? So earlier, we were looking at revenue of $10 million. Is that, was that baked into that or is this like a contract revenue?
No. Well, they're not actually sending, they're not giving us a check. They'll pay for programs. So for example, we're running a, a program, actually not running it yet, we're about to start, a program that's offered by a company that our employees would sign up for different wellness challenges. So that $55,000 will be paid, some of that $55,000 will be paid directly to the company, and I forget the name, to provide those services to our employees.
So Cigna writes a check to XYZ company?
Yeah.
XYZ company comes to Cheshire High and provides some?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. And, you know, the.
It's like an in-kind contribution rather than cash.
Exactly. So it's $55,000. It's not given to us as cash. It's provided in wellness programs. And they, it is subject to their approval, but they're bringing us the programs. And some of them are pretty, you know, pretty good. So, you know, we're hoping that it helps us over time. So yeah, that's why it's not budgeted as revenue. And that $55,000 just is shared with the town, and we are collaborating with the town. This next program that we're going to launch is jointly with the town.
The town and schools did this, moved to Cigna's?
Together.
Okay.
Yeah. More questions on medical? Yes, sir.
Um, this just occurred to me. You said our administrative costs dropped dramatically switching over to at?
Cigna.
Cigna.
Mm-hmm.
So where did that excess cost go to?
Well, it's baked into the.
Where did the savings go to? I must have missed it.
Yeah. No, it's baked into the budget request. So the 200, I believe that line item, let's back a few slides. So I took that into consideration in the 9.1 million request. Yeah, that would be the easy way, right?
I didn't know it was going to cost so much.
All right. Sorry about that. Okay. So this administrative fee, that's what we will be paying Cigna. If we look at last year, it was over 500,000.
Right.
So when I put together this budget number, I use the lower rate that Cigna provided. So it's built into the budget request.
Okay.
But it's a good question because I know where you're going. It's like, well, wait a second. There's another 250, we could say. But it's, it's built into the request. Okay. So the pension line item, we're asking for an increase of 29,750 to 9,97,217. That 29,750 comes directly from the actuaries, you know, based on the Town of Cheshire Pension Plan. As of right now, this number is 102 employees. So of the 9,97, 726,000 is for the employees that participate in the pension. And this number is growing because we have more employees that were hired after 2012. They were offered the defined contribution plan. So that's the breakdown of the two plans in terms of dollars. This is how the plan, the defined contribution plan works. It's a 403B. The Board of Ed contributes 5 percent of wages. That's a given. If the employee puts 1 percent from their own payroll deduction, the board matches that. So the board's maximum contribution is 6 percent. Employees can put as much as they want above the 1 percent up to the amount that the law allows. Employees have a five-year vesting on that 403B. So vest 20 percent per year if they hit five years. The board's contribution is theirs to keep. Obviously, their contributions are always vested. As a result of the arbitration ruling, the secretaries program was altered. So secretaries or the employees that are in that bargaining unit, they must contribute 3 percent. The board contributes 5, plus we have to match that additional 3 percent with five-year vesting. So, you know, that was, again, a result of an arbitration ruling that was, that went, you know, for the secretaries. So it's the same plan, but there's just different funding structures.
On the vesting, that applies to the, all of the Board of Ed contribution, including the matching amount, that matching 1 percent or 3 percent?
Yes.
So that whole, that whole thing is subject to the five-year vesting?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
So.
Hey, just going out for one second. I'm confused by that. It says must contribute 3 percent and then plus a 3 percent match.
So.
Is it really just 8 percent now? Like it's required to be 8 percent?
Yeah. It is.
Okay.
It's 8 percent.
Okay. I got it. Because the one above it is not 6 percent. It's 5 plus 1, and then the secretaries is 8.
Correct.
Okay. Got it. All right. Thank you.
All right. So the purpose of this, this is very simple. That in 2008, 2009, the markets took a terrible hit. We've completely recovered. Okay? The, you know, the market, the Dow was at a record high December 31st, and then it proceeded to exceed that two days ago. I didn't check today, but, you know, the stock market has clearly been up. But when the market turned down, that had a negative impact on our pension plans, and so we had to start funding higher amounts. And I'm going to show you that in a minute. The second factor is because the markets dropped as much as they did, most towns, boards of ed, corporations that have pension plans started relooking at the advice of their actuaries that you cannot assume that going forward, you're going to get an 8 and 1/4 percent rate of return in our case. And so the recommendation, which was agreed upon, was that we're going to assume a 7 and 1/2 percent rate of return to those employees or for those employees that are in the pension plan. We still owe them the same amount of pension, but now the assumption is you're not going to earn 8 and 1/4. You're earning 7 and 1/2, so you have to put more money in to meet your pension obligation. So what does that translate to? It translates to this, that if you look in 2006, you know, through 2011, the average contribution we needed to make from our budget to the pension account was, let's call it 225,000. And then when the markets fell apart here, but the pension revaluation took place in 2012, you could see that the contributions that have to be made have increased. So this increase has had a direct negative effect on our budget, right? Because we have to fund those pension costs in line with the actuarial recommendations. Kind of the piece of good news, when you look at this, is it seems to be leveled off. You know, we do have another pension valuation coming up. So I'm waiting to see, hopefully, that we could start seeing these pension contributions come down to some extent. But that is the reality of what we've dealt with in the pension programs here.
And when did they readjust to the 7.5 percent?
You know, it was, I want to say it was right around 2018, but I can check that. It wasn't immediate. It took a couple of years of discussion, you know, before that was actually done.
Okay. So do we know that the 7.5 is accurate or the, obviously?
It's an assumption.
It's an, it's an assumption.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But we've got a history. Are we getting 7.5 percent growth in the pension?
I'll have to ask a pension expert that. We, there is a pension board that, you know, we.
Because we could still be underfunded.
Yeah. I don't think we are, but we'll know that when the next revaluation is completed because that is part of what will be reported out. And, you know, we, it's called the Town of Cheshire Pension Plan. Again, it's, our employees participate, you know, it is managed, you know, overall for the town. There's town employees, police, fire, you know, town hall employees all participate. We may have different parameters for the actual pension amounts, but it is done collectively. So we follow the advice of the actuaries, and there is a pension board that is responsible for the results of the Town of Pension Plan. But I can, I'm sure I could get some more information on that.
Could you go back to the, go back, I think it's a slide? I'm just curious what the breakout is of 403B versus? Okay. So it's still significantly weighted toward the actual pension plan?
Yeah. The dollars?
Yeah. So I mean, yeah. Okay. Basically, that will change over time too.
So just always keep in mind that the only employees that participate here are non-certified staff. So it's a smaller percentage of our employment base.
But I would think, I mean, as you, as it moves, as it transitions over to the 403B, it's going to stabilize and it'll be just a direct function of salaries.
It'll be easier to budget. We won't need the actuarial assumptions.
Because, yeah, the risk has moved from the board and the town to the actual employees, retired employees.
And so as a percentage of budget, employee benefits are about 15.6 percent of the budget. And you could see it's been relatively stable. We had some periods here where it increased. And this assumes that, you know, the board does approve that higher amount to be funded into medical benefits. And then if you look at total employee benefits plus salaries, you could see here the, again, medical benefits. But this line shows that the increased request is 3.81 percent all-in for salaries and benefits. That's all I have. So, you know, I'll just wrap this up. But certainly, we could, you know, there's time for questions and whatever else the board wants to cover or members of the public. But the next meeting is next Tuesday, January 21st, also here. So we'll do the, essentially, the second half of the budget request. And then the next meeting after that is the public info session, which is January 23rd. So that's the following Thursday, also here. And then if the board needs, there is a scheduled special meeting, January 28th. So that's the schedule of meetings.
Phil, um, the increase in the, in the, in the medical benefits, get you to the level of healthy reserve, the healthy reserve level?
It'll, it'll ensure that the expected claims, 9.1 million, is, will be funded to what's expected. So if we put in 9.1 million, we expect it to be 9.1 million. So, if we put in 9.1 million, we expect it to be 9.1 million, whatever reserve balance we end with should stay constant.
Okay, but it's not reverse, it is not increasing. There's no increase yet in that reserve to that level that you are designing.
Right. The budget request is to just get even, not to start to increase that reserve.
That's next year.
Yeah.
So, I, I realize, I keep forgetting, this is my limit, this room, in these meetings. And I, there's some history to why the Medical Trust Fund dropped down in that year that you saw. Part of it was Board of Ed trying to use some of the increase against other things. Boards of Ed in the past purposely drew it down, because it was very high at a couple of points in time, and then the town council also. Town manager, town council, over the years, would tend to underfund that. But, the point is, when we had that dip, there was, I wanna say, a collaborative effort, but the town council and the board knew what was going on. It wasn't a surprise. It was something that was planned out. In fact, this goes back to David Shrum days, for those of you that remember. So, it wasn't a, an event that came out of nowhere in the Boris Koff guard. We obviously don't wanna underfund the account to the point where we're, you know, by the end of the school year, we don't have money to pay claims. Never want me in that position. We're at three-point, I forgot the number was, current healthy balance, which is 4.7 months. So, if you don't increase it, you can expect that, that to go down a little bit. Again, just be conscious of using that kind of slush fund. It's not really a slush fund. Everybody uses that word all over the place. All right? Say what? Don't use it as slush fund. It's not. They use it to pay claims. So, just be careful.
Yeah. No.
Mr. Masian, I just wanted to, to thank you for all your hard work, for you and your staff to put this together. This is reminiscent of your half an hour presentation at the Modernization Committee Meeting several weeks back. Before we get to any, perhaps, any final questions from the board, I know that there's still some members of the public who wish to speak. I know it's getting a little late in the evening, so, I thought I'd open, open the floor for public comment. If anyone has any comment, if not, we'll, we'll move on to final questions. No one from the public? Not right now? Okay.
No, I, I would, I would...
Oh, okay. Excellent. All right, great. All right, well, for me, I saw a couple of questions left over. Mostly, position-related, so that goes all the way back to the beginning, which I think was, what, about 7 o'clock, 7:15, earliest evening. In regards to the hall monitors at Norton and Chapman, were those the same hall monitors that were mentioned in the superintendent's report that were meant to be more of a, of a security nature?
Yes. Yes, so, the, there's a couple of things that we're doing in the school district. In all the schools, we're looking to add person traps. So, when you come in the front door, you know, I'll use Doolittle. Right now, there's a door, you come to it, you buzz in, you hit the buzzer, you're screened, you can come into the front door, and then, you're expected to go right into the main office. What we'd like to do in our schools is add a second set of doors that's also locked off. So, if you're buzzed in, there'll be a window that you can communicate with the person. You're gonna go through our screening process. We use lobby guard right now. And then, if you pass that screening, you're issued your visitor badge, and you buzz through that second set of doors. So, that's the idea of this person trap. The reason that we made a recommendation for Chapman and Norton is, the setup of those schools is, when you come in the front door, the office, you have to go upstairs and wind your way into the office at Chapman or Norton. So, what we can do at the other schools, we really can't do effectively there, and the recommendation is, have a person that's there on that first level. You'll still put in the person trap, but you'll actually have a person on that same floor. And the idea is to prevent somebody from gaining access into the building and disappearing. So, that was the request for those two schools in particular. The actual installation of these person traps, the money, funding was approved. We do have a security grant to offset 40% of the cost. It's a Public Building Commission project. You know, we, the Public Building Commission did hire an architect, so there are designs that are already in, in progress and being, you know, re-reviewed. We've reviewed them with the principals, so that is the current plan. But, those two schools really present a difficulty, just because of those office locations.
Thank you. Let's see, in addition, the 0.5 board certified, is it rehabilitation analyst?
Behavioral analyst.
Behavioral analyst, I'm sorry, I can't read my own handwriting. That was something that was, I believe, discussed at a, what do we call it? A showcase that we had several months ago? Was that in response to, to the discussions we had there?
Well, we have one...
We currently have two. And what we're starting to see is, as I reported last year, a much higher need for students that are experiencing significant social or emotional needs and mental health needs, which often can look like significant behavior, like aggression in a classroom. So, the BCPA would support, you know, the assistance that school-based teams need to help manage these children that are in crisis.
And would that half position, is that focused at the elementary level? Or is that, is it just district-wide? Or how would that be utilized?
It would be primarily focused at the elementary level.
And then, finally, the math interventionalist, interventionalist. So, we saw a significant improvement in the math program at Dodg, I guess, over the last year, year and a half, I guess. And we've had a decrease in population there. So, I was just wondering what the rationale was to have the additional intervento...
Interventionalists.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Woods, do you wanna elaborate on that one?
Sure. You can use the numbers of simple population in relation to that position. It's based upon scores of how kids are performing at the elementary level. They have their reading and math specialists, the Rams, and those positions that help support those kids when they come to Dodg. Our scientific research-based intervention program, that person would be kind of doing the hands-on, face-to-face with those students. So, even though there's a decrease in population, person head count-wise, the needs with the existing population have been increasing over time.
Thank you. That's all I have. Anyone else?
Yeah, I'm just curious, a comment I thought I had heard you make before was, one of the budgets, one of the budget rows was higher than anticipated, and you had mentioned administrator contract incentives?
I...
Payoffs for four retirees, is that, did I get that?
It was the principal, it was the principal's account. The budget increase is 0.49% instead of what you would expect to see 2 and 1/4. And that's because we have four administrators who were retired four years ago, who were getting incentives every year, including in last year's budget. And it's...
Oh, this is like the medical benefits, basically, that they get after they retire?
These are people that we're not gonna pay. And the round number is about $30,000.
Okay.
So, because the end of their incentive period expired last year, we're not budgeting for it this year.
I got it. Okay. All right, I understand that now.
Okay.
Do you have an estimate of number of retirees by the end of the school year?
And, well, for this school year, yeah, Jeff, I don't know what you have.
Moment, we only have one. Nobody else has expressed to me the desire, you know, to retire. But, that's not really uncommon for January. Usually, teachers, it's a difficult decision, you know, deciding to step away or not. And that, you know, as much as we try and encourage them to do that, you know, make that decision and notify us sooner rather than latter, we, we usually don't get those until later in the school year. April, May.
Do we have a retirement incentive program in place right now?
Not at the moment.
In fact, if you look in the supplemental section of the budget book, Faith, there's a, I think it's the first page there, it shows you the number of retirees and when we last offered incentives.
Okay, sorry.
No, no, that's okay. But, yeah, we haven't offered retirement incentives since 2014, and we've had a fairly high number of retirees. So, again, from a, we lose the experience, it helps with the budget.
So, you'd mentioned, if I heard you, you just rang a bell, what you were saying. You'd mentioned before that, and I'm not sure why you did this, but, so, my question is why? I might have a couple of questions. You projected 70% of teachers would be at the top step. I'm assuming you projected that like a few years ago?
When we did the negotiations with the teachers, you know, basically, four years ago, we just took everybody, moved them, you know, according to where they were, and 71% would be at stop, at top step. That was assuming that we had no turnover. So, it's not 71, it's 58. That's what I was...
Okay.
That's what I was explaining.
Okay. All right. Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Any other, any other questions from the board? Do I have to turn the gavel back over? I turn the, seeing that there are no more questions from the board or from the public, I'll turn the gavel back over to the chairman.
Thank you, Adam. Yeah, I wanna thank Jeff Vincent, the entire team here tonight, everybody who had input to this budget, for, A, helping, Vincent especially presenting over an hour and 50 minutes almost non-stop, which is impressive. Might be a new record. But, all of you attending, I know, especially our staff and administrators and employees, they have a long day, so, you know, it doesn't, we're all conscious of the fact that you're here religiously almost every year, and it shows us how invested you are to see that, you know, this budget's are, are worked through in a, in a professional manner, and you get what you need to run the school district. So, thank you for being here. For public attended, thank you very much. I know we lost Crystal over here earlier. What is it?
Jamie.
Jamie was there too. I'm surprised she didn't stick around. But, nonetheless, just before I announce, before we announce the meeting schedule and adjourn the meeting, I just wanna, as far as logistics, so, the next budget review is Tuesday night, 21st here at Dodg. And then, on 23rd, sometimes it works such that the Finance Committee is able to make a budget recommendation to bring forth to the full Board of Ed. Sometimes, that might happen on the second meeting, third meeting. It depends on how much information is covered and how much questions are asked. If for some reason, a 23rd, the Finance Committee and the board cannot adopt a budget, we'll have a special meeting on January 28th. And I bring this up, because we've asked the administration to add on a little more detail that wasn't part of the budget this time around, which was around facility fee usage and, as well as fees around how sports, extracurriculars are covered. Couple topics that have been cut up lately, and we thought that, since we're in the finance process, be a great time to talk about that, get the facts out there so all will vers. If we're gonna do that Tuesday night, there's probably a risk, there might be information overload. So, I'm gonna consider using that third meeting for me wrapping up, but we'll see how it goes. I'll leave that to you, Adam. Nonetheless, these materials will be available online, as always, on our Board of Education website, under the Budget Information section. Upcoming meetings, as we just mentioned, 14th here at Dodg is 7:00 PM. This Wednesday, we, I'm sorry, 21st, 7:00 PM. This Wednesday, the 16th, we have a Board of Ed business meeting at Town Council Chambers, 7:30 PM, it's a regular business meeting. I'm sure we'll have updates on a number of things, including how tonight's meeting went, any feedback we have from the public. January 21st is a budget review. January 23rd is hopefully the wrap-up review of the session. January 28th, there's a special meeting, and I'll stop there, because I don't think anyone wants to plan in February. Nonetheless, unless there's any other comments or questions from the board, do I have a motion to adjourn? Faith moved to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
Adam, I'm sorry, Andrew's seconds. All those in favor?
None.
It is unanimous. Thank you, everyone.